We'll come back from the recess at noon and commence our work-study program on the commercial wind energy regulations that was presented to the chamber this morning. So I would propose that we kind of start page by page unless you have comments to make.
Well, Mr. Chairman, we've all worked on this for months and for years and so forth. Some of us didn't realize the last study session that we had that we would talk about particulars. It was probably my fault, but I thought we were just going to have an interruption.
Thank you. But we did get into particulars and it seems like to me that the three controversial issues are spacing, sound, and flicker. I commend the chairman. When we went through it page by page, you pointed out at least eight items that I wrote down that I thought were extremely pertinent and pretty much agreeable, I think, by, unless I misread the commissioners in that room, that we could agree upon. And I wondered if it would be appropriate to get those items out of the way and so that then we could just discuss the major issues, which I think are the things that most of the people are interested in. And with your indulgence, unless you think this is a terrible idea, I'd like to go through those eight items that you basically brought up that I totally agree with and see if there's any agreement that we could get that done and then move on to what might be more controversial. Is that appropriate?
Yeah, I think we can do that. You know, I believe, and I think this is correct, and I think we're all on the same page on this, is we want to not only be able to protect the citizenry, the opportunity for family growth, but we also want to make it an opportunity to where if those that desire wind energy in their regions can have that opportunity. Is that a fair statement? That we look at the fact that there's some opportunities that may come about, but same time, we are held accountable by our citizens in the county. So you brought up here, if I can start, is this all right with you, Danielle?
It is. I thought maybe we should frame this up real quick because I think there's been a little bit of confusion on what it is. I know we've stated it a few times, but this is, what we're reviewing today is not a CUP application or any application or any particular decision on any development. What we're reviewing today is the minimum requirements necessary to file an application, which then starts the whole process over again where there's a public hearing with the planning commission, planning commission decision, and then ultimately back here. Am I right?
Yes, you are correct. This is not anything definite. We are looking at these regulations so that we can, as Commissioner Sellers, agree on some potential to then have the Planning and Zoning Commission write it up in a form to present to us in a future meeting.
Yeah, and I just...
Not at this stage. It would be the staff that would take...
Staff.
The staff would make red line changes to the proposal as a consensus directs and bring that back to you. This is, at this point, it doesn't go back to the planning commission.
Right.
Until you decide.
I didn't mean it went back to the planning commission. I thought they would be doing the redlining.
No, no.
They're not.
These people are.
Okay, sorry.
We are, yes.
Got that straightened out.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I just wanted to make sure everybody understands, because I know it's really easy to apply the lens of the CUP application that was presented and then petitioned against and is now in litigation as what we're talking about here, but that's not, right? And these are the minimum standards.
We are not, we are not referring to the past CUP that we're in litigation about.
Okay. Thank you.
So, could I maybe mention the eight things, Commissioner Hurst, that I feel like we might have some degree of agreement on?
That would be fine.
Okay.
Twenty-three, two.
First one I noted was twenty-three, two on item number four. There was some discussion that a qualified third party means and what that is, and I think that most of us agreed that that qualified third party is one that is agreed upon by the applicant and the county.
And is the county the commission?
The third party would be discussed in the development agreement so that we'd be between county commissioners.
The second thing is on twenty-three dash five.
I didn't know where I were.
Twenty-three, two. That's a page. I'm sorry, it's twenty-four dash five, item... It's twenty-three dash five is what it should be, item number F. There was some discussion on that that should include special flood hazards and wetlands. I thought that was a very good comment that the chairman made.
And when we say wetlands, that refers to the FSA wetland area map.
Twenty-three dash six.
I would, I would, do we want to add FSA till we define a wetland as to who?
Mark.
We can do that, yeah, but make it more specific. Yes.
On twenty-three dash six, I believe this is something that Mark pointed out, is an item E. The parenthesis E should be parenthesis D. On twenty-three dash six, item H.
Just a second. Twenty-three dash six, change to D.
Correct.
Okay.
On twenty-three dash six, page, item H, there was discussion that the last sentence really didn't have any pertinence and could be deleted.
I need some extra visit about this primarily because... When you say a city, so basically this says one mile from the city limits, incorporated city boundary?
Correct.
Not including the extraterritorial.
That's the way it was originally written, not including.
Why wouldn't you include, I'm asking this, just curious a little bit on why the determination was made to not recognize ETJ even though that it has to go before the city planning and zoning to be approved, right?
Not in ETJ. ETJ is governed by the city.
Yeah, but it had, if one were to put one turbine in that area, then that would have to go to the city, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's just a definition in this then?
Yes.
Okay.
Why, why does it, why are we even talking about it then if the ETJ is what controls?
I think that's what we got to, that the fact that that sentence just wasn't even necessary for the meaning of the paragraph.
Yeah, I think that's what the discussion was at the time. It might have been something that upon further review probably should just be removed. I think the original intent was to just say that you cannot locate a turbine within one mile of an incorporated city boundary.
I think we did talk through that, and I think we might have also talked about dropping the first part of that sentence in H up to tax base comma.
What originally was is that not all cities have an ETJ. And to not allow a turbine within one mile is protection of the city. If the city had an ETJ, they had sole right to have a turbine or not. That was their decision.
Okay.
If a corporate, corporate boundary within one mile, is that protecting the city?
For one mile.
Yeah, for that one mile.
For that one mile.
But yet not, but yet their ETJ, which could be two miles or three miles. Three miles maximum. They could allow a turbine. So there could be a situation where you could allow a turbine within the extraterritorial, but not the city. So the idea was to protect the city boundary.
I think we just need to keep the middle part, which says no turbine shall be located within one mile of an incorporated city boundary at the time of a conditional use permit application.
It's fine with me. Personally, I'd like to see it extend a little further because as a city might have the opportunity to grow out a half mile or a mile, then they're not, you've hindered them from any exterior growth if you put it just within one mile of their present boundary. Would that...
That's why they was allowed, they could be allowed to build within their ETJ depending on whether they thought they was going to grow or not. That would be their decision.
So basically, a city then would have the opportunity to create an ETG to protect themselves.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I think the last sentence is just for informational purposes only for people who might be confused as to what a boundary line means.
That was part of the intent. Part of the intent was to clarify what a corporate boundary is. Some people may assume an extraterritorial is part of your corporate city limits and it's not.
I don't think it helped in this case. I think it made it more confusing.
Shall we delete that last sentence?
That's the result. Yeah. Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Delete the last sentence.
Okay, my fifth item that I thought that there was some degree of agreement on is on twenty-three dash six, item B, under noise, to change the word "consider using" to "use" turbine blades that are equipped with low noise trailing technology, et cetera, et cetera.
Shall use?
Yes. Instead of shall, consider using. I thought three of us had significant agreement that instead of just considering it, it should be a mandate.
So cross out should consider using, but shall use?
Will use.
Shall.
Shall.
Shall mean the same thing as will?
Okay.
Usually, well, I'll tell you what, my English teacher would not be wanting me to speculate, but most regulations I see use the word shall.
Okay.
I just don't want that to come up later on, okay?
Shall's, shall's I think perceived a little stronger than will. I mean, I don't know why.
The next item I thought that we talked about at length was twenty-three dash eleven, page, item J, was instead of saying a discussion of circumstances, the wording additional circumstances which may require the decommissioning of a turbine. And basically, that's putting it a little more definite. Instead of just discussing it, we're saying the de- increase, decommissioning agreement would have additional circumstances which may require decommissioning of a turbine.
What page are you on now? Twenty-three, six, H?
No. No. Twenty-three, eleven, J. Very bottom. Change the wording Ron, from a discussion to the word additional circumstances which may require.
Okay, let me get to the right page. Twenty-three, eleven?
Well, these were all your suggestions, Ron. You should have these underlined.
Well, I made a new one to follow my old prints. So I have twenty-three, eleven.
Article twenty-three, twenty-three, one oh nine, two J.
And so instead of additional, a discussion, it should be additional?
Circumstances, yes.
A crosshair discuss, discussion of, but additional.
Additional circumstances, okay. Yeah, I thought that was very vague, so.
Okay, the next item is twenty-three dash twelve, the next page, item eight. It presently reads fire, safety, and rescue plan, and the suggestion was made, fire, safety, rescue plan, and hazardous material plan. Leaving out the first plan. Fire, safety, rescue, and hazardous material plan.
Also, I included that last sentence. The plan shall demonstrate how the CWACS and equipment are protected from fire and hazardous material spills.
Read that again. Where are you reading from?
On number eight, the last sentence. Or say, including hazardous material, but...
From fire, okay, so fire and hazardous material?
Yeah, because that sentence just stands for fire.
That's mine.
But the plan, the fire, safety, and rescue plan shall demonstrate how the system and the equipment is protected from fire. Did you mean that, do you mean that, are you concerned about the system being protected or the environment around it? That's, I think that's a little...
Including a hazardous material plan. But just adding hazmat plan in there doesn't, this only talks about fire. And so if you add hazmat plan to the fire, safety, and rescue plan and hazardous material plan, then somewhere within that paragraph, there needs to be included a hazardous, how to deal with hazardous material, doesn't there?
Mark, the sentence, I understand what...
From the environment.
I understand that. The sentence itself says that the plan has to demonstrate how the tower and its associated equipment is protected from fire. That's the focus. Is that what you mean, the tower and not the environment?
From, from fire within the project boundary or something. Like a wildfire, for example.
That's not what it says. See what I'm saying? The focus of that is, is the tower itself.
The intent was to say...
Oh, I know, but my point is, I don't think it says that. So, and I have no objection if what we're saying is that, I mean, I just want to be clear because we're, this is probably the only one of the categories where we make some attempt to define for the county commission what it has to put in its, its development agreement on this subject. And I, since the county commission has absolute authority to address these subjects, whether or not they're identified here or not, if we're going to go to the effort of saying this has to be in the plan, I think it ought to be clear as to what we're talking about. So how would you rephrase that? How the...
The hazmat plan. Shall demonstrate...
What are we trying to say? What are we trying to protect here?
Well, I think we're trying to equip the, protect the equipment and the environment.
Because if you get a spill, that's, could essentially cause a fire.
So Joe, would you, would you say that this reads better if you say the plan shall demonstrate how the CWACS and equipment are protected?
From fire? And shall contain a hazardous material?
Plan to protect both the environment and the structures?
Hazmat. Is it a hazmat plan?
I think it's just hazmat plan.
Okay, my, my final...
Hazard material plan to protect the environment or just, and hazardous material plan. Period. Let the county commission define that. That's close enough, I would say.
That statement still acts as if it only protects the CWACS and their equipment.
What about the sentence before, the sentence right before that? The plan shall address fire within the project. Could you just put hazardous materials in that sentence?
I, yeah.
And then it takes care of the whole site.
About this sentence.
Mark can reword that.
A hazardous material plan shall demonstrate method, a method to protect the CW, CWACS, and environment.
Okay, I appreciate your indulgence here, but my final one that I thought we pretty much had agreement on was to add number nine to the page that we were just talking about. And that is to have an appropriate security agreement. There was discussion about security agreements and how they would be maintained and last for the term of the project and so forth, and I think we talked about having an appropriate Those are the changes that I would like to have considered for the final draft.
That would be a security agreement for the area that a CWACS is on or any outlying secondary proper storage.
Maybe it's surety agreement.
What type of security?
Surety agreement.
To pay for the decommissioning or?
Oh, surety agreement.
Surety, okay. I misused a word.
Oh, that's, yeah.
Appropriate surety agreement.
An appropriate, yeah, and those, and I've seen those in development agreements in other counties, so that is, that's a standard subject for sure. A surety agreement. Does that have to do with decommissioning, doesn't it?
Well, I think...
Anything else? As I saw, it had to do with establishing a surety to fulfill its future financial obligations and one of the most onerous of which was to, to address a decommissioning that could be 50 years down the line, but that, still, we make an attempt to do that. Having a surety, you know, as long as this, they keep upgrading this thing, they've got 90-year leases, so it could be a very long time that you would have to maintain a surety. So that's some of the complications you face when you're drafting it. That would be my problem.
So can we move on to the big ones, which are under twenty-three dash one oh seven on page twenty-three dash five, which are setbacks, noise, flicker?
Battery down, is it?
Yeah, Mike saved the day.
Well, it seems like that this is a, like you said, one of the real high discussion points, and so I would ask, it seems like that this is a real sticking point and discussion point.
Which one are we on?
Twenty-three, five, page, down at setbacks.
I think the other two commissioners are aware of what you suggested in that last planning meeting, Commissioner Hurst.
You know, I did, just curiosity. I, I know that, and I use Nextera as an example, I think, any company, but particularly Nextera voluntarily offered 3,000 feet in Neimahaw County. I went down and traveled some 37,000 acres, 58 sections down in Pratt. And I don't know whether any other commissioners did that, but I went 10 miles one direction by three miles and seven miles by four the other direction, just to get an idea of not only household density, but drove up to the turbines and down there, they were, and this will come later on B, but they were about 550 feet, pretty close to that, from a roadway. And I feel that when I did a study on the Reno County, and I, and it seems like we all are concerned with the fact that we have Siemens here, and it seems like we're, we might be a little cautious as to what type of setbacks there would be from boundaries or from houses. And realistically... And realistically, why, I, I would just ask why a consideration wouldn't be given to at least twenty-five hundred or three thousand feet from, from boundary, at least twenty-five hundred feet from boundary. What I did do was I used this map, county map, and I went township by township. And I looked at how many sections within Reno County would qualify at that twenty-five hundred feet, and, and I, I earlier used sixteen hundred and forty-two feet, because that's somewhat what most companies won't let their employees get in in case there's a fire, such as occurred up in Wyoming on a brand new facility. But when I looked at that, taking the whole county, that includes those that would not, not include a waiver to get this done, okay? I come up with somewhere around eight hundred and forty-four, and that's not real accurate, because if you look at Quavera, they require a five to seven mile setback around Quavera, according to Kansas Wildlife and Parks of Pratt, when I talk to that man down there. And so, we're not we have plenty of available sections to put wind on. And so, I don't think that twenty-five hundred feet, or three thousand feet, or five or six times is, is, from what I can gather, and I'd just like your thoughts maybe on why why you feel that maybe it should be stuck at two thousand feet.
Well, I'll respond, but here, pretty quick, I'd like to hear Daniel's thoughts on this, because as people listening to this meeting should know that due to open meeting laws, none of us commissioners can have conversations on county business outside of this meeting, which is public, so I really don't- I really don't know what Daniel's thinking is on this item. Thank you. You know, I, I, I look at the fact that Pratt is at twenty-five hundred feet, but I don't believe that they have much in regard to, to noise or flicker, and it seems like to me that if we go at two thousand feet and then include the suggested noise and flicker parts that were being somewhat appropriate, and fair to both an applicant and fair to landowners. Both the landowners that might not want wind, and landowners that might want to rent their property. I think that, I appreciate the fact that adjacent property owners should have some relief in these ordinances, but I also appreciate the fact that a person that owns property ought to get to do what they want with it, that helps them stabilize their income. And these are large income producing leases to the property owner, so my opinion is, two thousand is fine if we include the noise and flicker. Might be a little more than that if we did away with those.
Well, so, just so I understand your two positions, you're, you're two thousand feet from a premise as stated, right?
Yes, as stated in the document, from the premise, not a property line.
And you're three thousand feet from property line?
Which is a huge, huge difference of distances.
So, I, I want, I want to be very careful here in making sure that we're, I think, we keep, like even, you know, Mr. Chairman, what, what I heard you say, I, I think, I think you're, you're applying this to the, the C U P, or the assumed new C U P that will come out of this, and, and I don't want to do that. I, I want to establish the minimums and, and have faith in the process. And, and I do think that the Planning Commission, when it made its decisions, was probably less conservative, because these are the, the minimums that start the discussion, than if they were to review the C U P that may come again. And, and it's, it's, I mean, history is clear that our Planning Commission voted to recommend denial of the C U P that was originally presented. So, I, I guess I'm reluctant to apply what I may apply to a C U P that comes out of southeast Reno County to standards across the entire county. And so, and I know there's a lot of, there's a lot of lobbying going on, on both sides, and, and, and I the, the people that live in southeast Reno County are making convincing arguments to me on, you know, what they think should happen. The, the only thing that I, I disagree with them, because I'm not looking at individual facts of an individual C U P, I disagree that we need to solve this today. Unless that's where you are. Like, it, it would be helpful for me, you know, Mr. Chairman, since you're kind of on, on the, the most restrictive end, if, if the intent here is, is to, you know, put a moratorium on wind in Reno County, because at three thousand feet at the property line, it seems like we're getting close to that. If that's the intent, I, I think we should have a discussion that, starting there. If, if we want to have a moratorium, let's have that discussion, because I, and I said this when we had our planning meeting, and I'll say it again, that there's an extreme amount of work and effort, frustration, legal fees that has gone into this. And if we set everybody up for the exact same situation, and we make the Planning Commission go through the entire process again with public comment, and we come back here, and let's just say it's two to one again, and it gets overridden again, which I think is likely, because if you look at the, the information, they had a twenty percent requirement to override, they're almost at fifty percent. So, it's likely going to take another year to get to the same situation, and then we could get sued again. And, and I think that's the worst possible case out of, out of this process, is that we essentially send the same thing down the river and get the same thing back. So, maybe we should start with whether we want wind here at all.
You know, I had a conversation yesterday, was called, not my initiative, but I was, I had received a phone call from Lisa French. And she mentioned also that there are some areas in Reno County that the people don't want wind, but there's plenty of other areas to where that would be accepted. If we were to go up to Little River Township, there's nineteen sections up there that could, without waivers, could have at least one, if not multiple, without doing any waivers to put a, a wind farm up there, and if you include Grant, East and Grant West, and maybe some of Valley North, and Salt Creek North, not Salt Creek, Reno North, there's more. And I think we would run into the same situation there, and you tell me if I'm thinking different, but I, I believe that the people up there would react the same way as those in southeast Kansas, southeast Reno County. And so, she will, you know, in our conversations, there's just some areas that, that really due to population, you know, and, and that's one thing I did down at Pratt, I looked at what their household density was at Pratt, and it's point three two seven in those fifty-eight sections that I traveled on, household density. It's nine times that, i- if we draw a straight line and, and and straighten up that gerrymandering that's done down in, south on fourteen highway, and we take all the zoned area, draw a line from Broad Acres South, we're out of, we, we cover the, the zoned area around Cheney Lake. And we still have over six, hundred and sixteen sections in Reno County that can still involve wind, a, a W X system. And, and that includes a five mile radius around Quavera in Reno County. So, you know, I, I appreciated that thought, that, you know, there's just some areas that, that folks don't want a wind system, that's not to say that, and that brings back to my earlier conversa, statement, that I, would you not agree with me that we want to be able to have a W X system in Reno County, if it's possible?
Absolutely.
And, and I think, would you agree with that?
Yes.
That that's right.
Well, not, I'm not sure I'd use the word if it's possible, if it's appropriate, maybe.
I would go there, yeah. I think that's a much better word than I use, I sure do. And so, brings back to the conclusion that you were asking, that question you were asking, is can we feasibly decide and, and, and agree on, on, on some areas that just really don't want the wind power in their neighborhood, and, and most of that's included in this zoned area. And so, you know, let's make it available in Reno County. That was just, you know, original conversation that we, that, that occurred here yesterday. And I like that, I like that concept myself, in the fact that let's, let's make it available when it were appropriate.
But Commissioner Hurst, I think you're picking and choosing some of the words from Planning Commissioner French, I also talked to her about what they're presenting to us, because I know she's been involved since day one, and, and I believe, and I don't want to misquote her, but I think that she told me that what the Planning Commission presented to us was their best document, taking all things under consideration. And I don't, I didn't hear her say we should rule out any area or anything of this nature. I think that that's the interesting thing with three commissioners, and if we had five, we'd probably have five ideas, but I don't know that I share Daniel's feelings that it'd be bad to go through the process again, is, I, I think any wind company's going to know history and, and probably wouldn't put money in something that is going to be petitioned against, knowing well that the political environment is, that they're not going to get three votes on this commission for something that people petition against. So, to me, is, is, is we ought to set some standards and let the industry look at what can and can't be done, and, but I at least want to give them a chance to develop in Reno County. With the exception of the people that live in this area, it's almost unanimous, the, people that contact me that, that feel that, that how can we state that we're for alternative energy forms in, in, in our country, and yet rule out something in our hometown? I just, I'm not willing to do that. I, I think we get, personally, I think we need to get away from oil, and I think that we're going to see a ton of solar in the future. How long wind projects are going to be practical, I don't know, but from my standpoint, that we need to be proactive to decrease the amount of oil used in this country. And that's why I want to give a developer a chance to bring something to us that might fly.
You know, I, I agree with you, I just think there's some areas that, and, and, you know, I'm just relaying what our conversation was yesterday, and maybe, maybe that wasn't relayed to you.
You know, for practical purposes, if, if another developer brings back the same project that they brought, I've lost track of time, but started two years ago. We're going to get a petition against it, and, and there's not three votes to let that project go, so I, I'm hoping that some developer's going to be more creative and figure out ways to mitigate the negatives of wind in a environment.
So, Mr. Chairman, if, if I could talk hypotheticals for, for a second?
Yeah.
If there was a, an application made in this area of the, of the county? Would you approve that? Would you, would you agree to that?
You know, it's not, it's I rely on the, on the people that live there. I may disagree with some of the numbers that they showed me, the data, but I think it's overwhelmingly that should we go back through this process again in that part of the, of the, of the county, that we're going to be right where we are today.
So, you brought up Little River Township, not everybody knows where that is.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's Bu, I know where it is.
Yeah, I bet you do.
It's right, it's Bueller, right? And, you know, I'm putting myself in your shoes. If there was an application in this part of the, the county, I think I might have a hard time approving that. And it's really not that much different than this.
Not really.
But again, like, I know Commissioner Sellers and I disagree on this, but I think, I think it's, this has impacted so many people, both emotionally and financially, that I'd rather figure this out now than, than go through the process again and have any one of us vote no. So, are you, to move along kind of what you're thinking, are you saying if, if there was a, as an example, a a higher restriction in this zoned area to where the bar is very high? But a lower restriction in the unzoned area, would, would that satisfy your concern?
Frankly, I haven't thought about that, because my, my whole thoughts been on something that maybe we could apply to the whole county, and so, yeah, I, I think that would have some potential, if we could discuss it and come out with something. I, I kind of like the idea of being able to there's plenty of sections and plenty of area for wind to be in in Reno County. What do you have in mind, exactly?
Trying to broker something here, I don't, I don't, I didn't, I didn't come with a a set agenda- Trying to broker something here. I don't, I don't, I didn't, I didn't come with a, a set agenda here today. I wanted to hear your, your opinions, the staff's opinion, and then see if there was something we could compromise on. I mean, I, it, it's unfortunate that we didn't get this right at the beginning. But that's where we're at. I, I'm, I, I'm, it's a little suspect that the developer refuses to push to the west some. There, there's a lot of area to the west, and I think there's, there's more flexibility. I could be wrong. I mean, you kind of challenged that a few weeks ago, thinking that maybe there's, there's just as many people in the west part of our county that would, would, would not want this development as, as the southeast.
We don't know that for sure. But it would give them an opportunity.
I mean, I tell you the thing that made the biggest impact for me over the last few weeks is when I saw the, the protest petition and, and the percentage of people that protested the CUP. And I saw the statutory bar at twenty percent, and, and, and the petition amount was, I think, forty-seven. And some of them were thrown out that probably, you know, if they would've got the name right or whatever, probably would've been over fifty percent. And that's such a, such a strong indication out there that they don't want it. That I'm, I'm not particularly willing to repeat that again. So if, if that means that we have to carve out different areas or create an area that's just not right for wind in the county, and tell the developer to move west and figure something else out, or tell the developer, you know, like, I think NextEra can do better for Reno County. I, I, I don't like the fact that, that they've came and, and acted like a community partner, but they're suing the people of Reno County. I don't like the fact that they've made comments that, you know, this or that is gonna kill the deal, yet they're still here suing us to do it. I, I think they could do a better job if they're truly a partner in Reno County of making a deal that works for, for the people that are impacted, not just the ones that are getting paid. So, I, I think, I think there's an opportunity to perhaps carve out a, a part of the county as, as an area that's, that's not conducive to wind development. I think it could be petitioned to the contrary, to where if, if we carve out too much and, and people want it, they can always petition it back in. And then I think we, we say, you know, western half of Reno County's open for business. And maybe western Reno County disagrees with that. But we need something new. We, this, we, let's, we gotta do something different, I, I think.
Well, but you still gotta tell a potential developer what the minimum standards are in some given area. And I'm not sure your suggestion's any different than the reality is, if, if the same proposal's being made that was made a year and a half ago in southeastern Kansas or southeastern Reno, they're gonna receive a petition against it. They're spinning their wheels. They're not gonna get anywhere. They've got to be smart and bright enough to look at someplace that they, they can develop without the, the negativism of the area. And so, to me, the standards that we're looking at today are, are minimum standards. And we let the industry try to develop, put together development that people aren't objecting to. If they object and have the forty percent, as I just said a minute ago, I knew that there would be one vote against it. Sounds like there's two votes now. So, I, I, I just see Daniel doing nothing is, is just, one, telling the planning commission, you worked for eight months and, and we're not doing anything with your advice. And two, I don't see how that gives a developer a position that this county is taking.
Well, I'm not suggesting to do nothing. I'm just suggesting not to do the same thing again.
Well, it, it's hard for me to believe that a developer with the costs involved and so forth is gonna propose the same thing again.
That's, that's a valid argument. I, I, I think they're gonna be a lot smarter this time. And again, that goes back to, it sure be nice if the developer was communicating a little more as to what their intent was, so we could work together on this. I, I, if the intent is to just squeeze it in there and do everything possible to get around, you know, get it at nineteen point nine percent, so this thing will pass, I don't think that's a great situation either. And, and I think they're, they're well qualified to figure that out. And if they would communicate more clearly, on if that's their intent, I think maybe we need to communicate a little more clearly that, I'm, I'm not particularly interested in shoving this down people's throats in, in southeastern Reno County. I just, not at the levels that, that they're fifty percent don't want it, Ron, like.
I brought up that line only because in, in, in looking at what, and hearing and attending meetings is the conversation of the planning board, was where do we go to further zone? And it was brought up that K fourteen, Valley Pride, Broad Acres, those were things that, that's first step, if I remember right, Mark. Is that what, was thinking about if, if we don't take zoning to the whole county, that, 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 that might be the first step?
Right. Yeah, the, the initial, I think, request by the county commission was to look at zoning and what do we do with that. And so the, the planning commission really struggled with what do we do and how far do we go? And so there were some, a lot of ideas discussed in the early going. One of the ones was we could go a mile or two northwest of K fourteen, ensure that, that battery and that would take care of our concentric circles that we have right now. After much debate, much discussion of the planning commission and, and a lot of the legislation, they didn't know what to do. They weren't clear on the direction of the commission. There was at one point in time the county commission said just focus on the southeast portion of the county. And so then they kind of dropped the zoning into that and focused on zoning the southeast corner. And then we started looking into wind regulations at that point.
I, I think the regulations are, are well thought out and, and generally appropriate. I, I think they did a good job. I'm, I'm just, I just, I just don't think it's gonna work in, in this area. Like, I, I think it's, it would work conceptually elsewhere, but it, it, I mean, ma- maybe the staff could, could discuss for a moment in generally what the differences are between the CUP that was out there and, and these regulations. I mean, from a setback perspective.
The setbacks, the CUP proposed two thousand foot requirement of original house. And there was no, anything about wind flicker originally.
Yeah, like what Don said, you know, the, the setbacks are, are the same, but you gotta look at our current regulations. Our current regulations don't mention any of the other stuff that is contained within this document. All it talked about was the setbacks.
Right. But, but the fact of the matter is, NextEra's essentially said that all of the, the new regulations will work. Like, through people, they've, they've said that. I mean, I know they, they may not have told you that, but I think it's been made clear to me that these regulations will work for NextEra. Whether that means they're gonna apply the exact same area, obviously it can't be exactly the same. But,
If it helps, I believe I can throw a little light on where two thousand feet came from. When NextEra first came into the county commission, Dan Deming just said two thousand feet. And it just went from there without any this further discussion. So, you know, they were happy, I'm sure, to hear that two thousand feet because of Pratt's twenty-five hundred feet. But that's, that's where the initial two thousand feet came from. Another thought of that line is, and I'm not trying to necessarily promote three thousand feet, but I believe if you put three thousand feet out there, then you won't have to worry about any cost that the county might be associated to have to come up with to enforce or prove wrong any sound problems. And it would certainly minimize flicker. You know, there's an easy way to get around flicker. Just shut, shut them down for that period of time when it's gonna flicker on your property. And they do, they, wind companies do that with migratory birds. They've said they would. We heard that from Pratt. And I, I, you know, wherever the, we'd set a boundary up here, I, I think, Commissioner Friesen, you're, you're basically correct, is, is let's be an open county. But there are some areas that are not conducive to a WEC system.
So, Commissioner Sellers, what, I mean, what do you think about a, a situation where we take the, chairman's approach here, which is essentially what this petition is asking for, for the zoned areas, which is this area in green? And you apply, it's essentially one thing, a larger setback of three thousand feet or six times the height for a non-participant property line for the zoned area, and then the rest, we leave the rest the same.
For the document? Well, while I'm thinking about that, I guess it concerns me a little bit that, Daniel, you, you keep mentioning NextEra. I, yes, they've been active in the area and so forth, but I think we're talking about something here that might relate to a different developer or different set of circumstances and all. And so, to me, I think we should be thinking about a wind developer instead of quote NextEra because who knows might, who might come in with a project.
Well, they're the giant elephant in the room. I'm just gonna say it. Like, and, and you're saying exactly what I said at the beginning. That's, that's not why we're here, right? We're here to, to make general regulations that could be applied to a CUP and, that will be applied to, to a CUP in the future. But the fact of the matter is, they're the ones that have studied Reno County, and they're likely the ones that will make the next CUP application. And they've made no indication that they will not continue to look at southeast Reno County. So, it's, it's not unreasonable to be thinking about that when we're thinking about how these rules will apply. But I agree. You're right. It's, you shouldn't focus solely on that.
I, I don't want to have Reno County have the mindset of necessarily of Sedgwick, McPherson, and Potawatomi County. But I think we could come up with a little bit of something that will work by a, either what you talked about was larger setbacks and, and the noise level and things, or just prohibition on these areas. And maybe, maybe for instance, take K fourteen straight south.
I, I like the larger setbacks. I mean, it's, that's what people want. I know this isn't an official petition, but somebody wants a lot of work in it. I don't, I don't believe it to be fake.
And I, I personally would like to see some type of regulations, and I think maybe that's where we're talking about this, that maybe can apply to the whole county at, at some level.
Well, the, yeah, and that's where I was going, was there would just be an additional setback rule associated with zoned areas.
Well, we've been wanting to zone the western part of the county, and they've been against it. This might push them into some zoning.
What do you feel about just utilizing something like fourteen highway that had been brought up before?
I don't think that's fair. I think we've got a map of its own property.
I, I really, there was a lot of thought put into what we should control and what we should not.
If you look at that part that's unzoned in there, if I'm looking at this correct, there's what, nine square miles that do not appear to have any properties, or very few.
Commissioner, I think on the map, the properties are only shown where it's zoned. So if it's not zoned, it's not spacious.
Oh, okay. That looks.
Yoder south, Yoder south in my calculations, okay. Yoder Township, south of, that includes part of the zoned area already. But there's a total of seventeen sections in that Yoder Township area. And that includes some that are already zoned, so that wouldn't affect that. So nine, ten, eleven, twelve. But I'd have to look at the map and see how many are buildable on that, based upon that.
I think, I think this could be done better, like, all the way around.
Okay.
And I think, I mean, just, just on how, and it's not just the county, it's the developer. Like, people are so mad down there. I don't, I don't think it matters at this point. Like, I, I think it was, it was so poorly executed that we, we've lost the opportunity in that area.
Actually, Yoder Township, there's only, in Yoder Township, there's only four without a waiver that could be built on. And I've been trying to let my.
Oh, Daniel, okay. If I accept or consider your premise that the majority of the people down there enough to petition are always gonna be against whatever project, and you and I have received emails. and you and I have received emails as their suggestions are, are 5,000 feet from a home or something, which we all know there's no construction possible at, at that kind of limit. It, it would appear to me that, that you in particular, and, and I think I know that in potential of, uh, of Ron, is, is there Commissioner Hurst is not gonna change his vote against a petition in a given area. Maybe we just adopt that, uh, we'll allow 2,500 feet and no noise or flicker ordinance in unzoned areas.
Well, that's more than, than, than the, the commission.
I know it's more, but I, the, the reality is that there's three votes here. And one of us is not gonna dictate this unless somebody comes towards the middle someplace to get two votes towards some type of document.
Well, that's where I thought we were headed with. Let me, let me make a proposal to you two again. Essentially, I mean, we, we can continue crafting the particulars of the planning commission's recommendation, but the major issue here is setbacks. If we, um, keep setbacks as is for non-zoned areas and add an additional setback requirement for zoned areas, which is 3,000 feet or six times the turbine height for non-participating and 1,500, I haven't thought about, there's, there's another point there, but 3,000 feet from non-participating. If you do that, there's still an opportunity for negotiation and, and to include those people into participating and, and reduce that requirement. But it brings, uh, those people that are against it to the table. And, and that doesn't, that doesn't preclude any of these areas from development.
Would you restate that, are you, are you suggesting in unzoned areas, the document as written?
Yes.
Basically, and the zoned areas, 3,000 foot from non-participating?
Commissioner, I don't think you have any control of the unzoned areas.
Doesn't apply there.
Don't we on the CUP?
None unless we do an overlay.
You gotta, you gotta apply the regulations there.
Why can't we just add that to the regulation in front of us?
We, we gotta start all over again on that issue, right Mike?
Right, right. We would have to go through a public hearing and...
Give notice to the people affected by that and...
Probably should have the paper for that, zone the rest of the county or any portion thereof. It was, it's, he was a two-pronged approach of the planning commission. The first issue we were trying to address was how far to extend the zoning, and we, we spent several months on that issue. Once we had a clear, um, direction from the county commissioners, that's when we focused on southeast portion, close that gap in that area. So we went through a public hearing process, got that area zoned. Then we started working on these, uh, these regulations for that area. But anything that's currently unzoned, these regulations would not apply.
Okay, my mistake is, has there been any feedback from residents in the non-zoned areas that they wish to be zoned or wish this regulation to apply to them?
Yes, there's been other people that are currently unzoned that have requested that, um, they become zoned. That's when the issue really started coming for the planning commission, is how far do we go? You know, do we just go to 14 Highway, do we go to Broad Acres Road? That's where the planning commission really got bogged down. That's when, when we went back to the county commissioners and said, give us some more direction because we're kind of getting bogged down on this. The direction the county commission, as I recall, was to say focus on southeast. That gave the planning commission that direction that they were looking for, and we did that. And we, we left the rest of the county for another time today because this was more of a hot topic to get these regulations, uh, written.
So somebody could go build wind in any part of western Reno County that's unzoned and there would be no, no ability to object?
Correct.
They could put it however they wanna do, close to a house? They could put it however they wanna do, close to a roadway?
Could we not issue a moratorium on wind energy in the unzoned area?
Yeah.
There is, there is a way to do it.
There is that.
Yeah.
As it stands right now, they could go out there and build that with no, no regulations, no public hearing, no right to come and speak, you know, for or against. They could just come out there and, and build it. There would be an assumption, I, I would guess, that they, they would try and come in with some type of developer's agreement with that, but as far as the zoning perspective goes, there's nothing to do on, on my end.
And they could have done that here before this was zoned.
Yeah, and they could have done that in the southeast portion for the area that was unzoned before we, we had zoned it. As Mr. Sol said, the other thing you do is you could put a moratorium in place in that area.
So can we agree that this is two separate issues then? Or we should focus on the zoned area? Or do we wanna do both at the same time? I mean, it sounds like we have to do them separately.
I think that would be...
Mark or Don, just give me a little bit more on the unzoned area of Reno County, all the white on this sheet. We have no control over spacing whatsoever. But we would have some control in a developer's agreement, would we not? They have to, they have to get a...
You could write that in if, if they so choose to bring one forward. You could write controls in that area, I think.
Mr. Sellers, they don't, they don't, there's no obligation for them to enter into a development agreement under the circumstances you described. They frequently do because they want goodwill and they, and so forth, but, uh, they really, they, they don't have to negotiate for one, and they don't have to address issues that the county would like addressed.
And I think that's exactly why the wind developer in, in another county came in and said, we will, we will agree, voluntarily agree to go to 3,000 feet because it's an unzoned county. The only other option I see is to do, is, is this still available? We could do an overlay if we wanted to proceed, say with partial now, and consider an overlay with some of these regulations involved?
It's certainly an option, it's maybe not one that I'm ready to get behind and say I'm in favor of doing particularly an overlay without doing some more research and listening to both sides on it. An overlay would certainly be an issue because that was one option that we discussed early in the process of just doing an overlay for wind. Overlays are typically associated with cities when you have like a major thoroughfare accord or that you wanna add added protections to it. An overlay, in short, is something to consider.
And I, and I do know that that was kind of a directive at one time, was to start setting up meetings in the unzoned areas at the county to invite people to come learn about zoning. But it hasn't been done yet.
It hasn't been done yet, pending, we wanna get this project done, done first. Commissioner Sellers, I just wanna make sure that you understand, yeah, that the map that you're looking at does not include the whole entire county. Make sure you realize that there's still 20 miles or so to the west. You're only looking at a portion, because you're only looking at, you know, city and dicker set up at the top. You know, it doesn't even include parages, and so realize that the county goes a lot further to the west.
What percent of the county is unzoned?
Two-thirds.
Well, I, I guess I'd like to try to get something settled.
If, would one consider, and, uh, maybe tell why or why not, uh, a basic prohibition in the zoned areas?
I'm, I'm not that far.
But you're 3,000 feet in the zoned areas?
For non-participating?
Yeah.
With the, with, with...
From a resident, non-participating resident.
See, sometimes when you gentlemen are mentioning setbacks, some of you are talking about from the primary residents, and some of you are talking about the property lines. That's a huge difference.
What's that say there?
I'm sure it says property line.
Principal building.
No. It says property line.
Is it property line?
That's a huge difference from the primary residents versus the property.
You know, as, as I've said many times, and I think both of you agree, is the, the present group in southeastern Reno County is, is not satisfied with 5,000 foot of spacing. But I don't know that that...
It'll be less than that.
Well, I, I've had people that have given me emails that say a mile.
10.5 too. You look at the petitions right there.
They've got a consensus.
I just, it seems like to me that we need to come up with a document that is workable, then let the developers deal with it. Then if there's the petition, we accept the petition and, and listening to both, both of you, there's never gonna be a project if there's that petition represented. But I, I don't know that we're gonna get any further than we are today on, on things, and so I'd be willing to put 3,000 feet in the, in the document and rule out wind and flicker. If that would...
3,000 from the...
The house, the unparticipating house.
I think we've got a pretty well consensus there with 3,000 feet from property line, which maybe that's just another couple hundred feet.
The, the property line, I've seen charts on this, Ron, you, you rule out the whole section with the 3,000 feet from a property line?
Not if you put in there, negotiate a waiver.
Well, again, takes two votes and we're looking at some kind of compromise personally, and, and we respect each other's thoughts and so forth. But you and I are never gonna agree on whether it, you want a property line and I want from a house. And you and I are not gonna agree on that point, so...
Can, can, can I get some, uh, explanation? Um, I'm just reading it here. Principal building, what that means?
Principal building is typically the house. The primary residence.
Is that defined?
Primary residence. I think we find, uh, go back from one.
Yeah, it's...
Principal building means a primary residential structure on page 23 dash 2. Principal residential structure should not include outbuildings, storage buildings, commodities, or animals.
And what, is that pretty common practice? Is there any zoning rules in the state that use property line?
I don't think I can answer that question. I'd have to go back and look at the other, other counties. Yeah, as far as that, you do recall from the property line?
The only property line that they recommend, that they talk about is from the right-of-way property line, which is a property line, road right away.
Property, property.
And then the only other county around here that talks about a property line is the sound, which is Pratt, which is 60 decibel from a property line. That's the only two property lines that are mentioned that I'm aware of.
I'd almost be in favor of, um... In a second, sorry. In some ways, you know, if we increase the setback for non-participating, I mean, I'd be willing to lower it for participating.
Well, this does, doesn't it?
It already is included in that, I believe.
There's a waiver for participating.
But not, not less than high power plus 50.
But why do you even have to address it? Because it starts at 2,000.
Well, because we're allowing a waiver, if, if somebody wants to give a waiver to be closer to their houses in here. If you don't have a waiver, then you can't lessen the restrictions.
Minor. Whoops. So, in, in the staff report here with other counties, uh, Harper is 1,000 feet from an active residential structure. Sumner is 500 feet from a structure. Barton is 1.1 times, so that's roughly 5, 600 feet.
It, it needs to have a multiplier in there because we're seeing 600, 724 feet tall turbines.
So that's 1.1 high power plus, if it's 700 feet, 700, it's 770 feet.
770.
From a house.
Pratt, Pratt is 2,500 from a residential structure. Butler is 1,000.
Keep the sound in it at somewhere between 35 and 40 decibels at night, and 45 in the daytime maximum. And, uh, run 3,000 feet from a residence? Then, uh, I think that's doable in the, in the zoned areas. There's some other things involved, but, but as far as, as, as sighting, uh...
So to let you know, I'm not disagreeing, but if you have a 3,000 foot from the primary residence, then for a mile around that house, you can't have a turbine. The 6,000 feet's more than a mile.
Without a waiver.
Without a waiver.
Without a waiver. I would think that any non-participating is probably not gonna wave.
Never know on negotiation to a waiver.
Yeah. Just so that you...
That leaves it up to the individual and not necessarily us to determine what they do. Right?
But Ron, uh, you, you feel even if we would, on setbacks 2A, if we changed that to 3,000 feet, you think we still need a noise? Because doesn't, wouldn't the 3,000 feet take care of the noise?
I think it probably should still be in there just in case, but I do think that that will take care of most of it. I, I think it would be.
So, so 45 decibels?
At daytime, and 40 at night. And the reason I say at night is be, is primarily because there's not the wind at night. And, you know, I can remember, Commissioner Sellers, I think you were on the city commission at one time in Hutchinson when they were putting in the smaller six-foot wind, wanted to put those in here in town. And I, and I believe the commission at that time said, uh, it's fine, you just shut it down at night so it doesn't bother the, the residences. And so, you know, from that standpoint, I don't think that having the sound barrier in there is, is, is gonna hurt anything. If, if it is, you know, if it won't affect it, what problem is having it in there?
Yeah, well, again, I...
It's a compromise though, I mean, I think that's what you're looking for, right?
So what do you mean by that?
Well, you, you give a little on the setback, you get rid of the complexity of the sound and noise. The sound and shadow flicker. I, I don't know if I'm ready to make the decision today, because it looks like it's too me.
What are we doing, what good are we doing? We've all studied this. We've all had hundreds of emails pro or con. Ron and I, well, Ron's been involved in this for four years at least. I've gone to meetings for two and a half years and listened to all that went into this and so forth. And it just seems like to me to prong a, a decision on this, just-
Well, I, I didn't walk in here today knowing that it would be up to me to decide whether this is going to be from the primary residence or the boundary line. So maybe I want a week to sleep on it.
I'm, I'm fine with doing it from the principal residence and just keep the sound in there.
Okay, let's do that.
What did you just suggest? Hmm? What did you just suggest?
I said we, we put, we, we look at this from the zoned areas at 3,000 feet setback from a primary residence and maintain the sound at 40. Want me to put numbers in? At 40 decibels at night and 45 in the daytime. And, and-
Delete flicker.
Well, I'm just talking about sound and setback right now. Okay? You know, I think flicker can be solved real easy. All you got to do is put it out of siding at 45 degree angle to a house and you've got that solved. But, you know, but-
Okay, so let me see if I understand where we're at here. If we go to the setback section, which is-
Okay. 3,000 feet or six times?
Setbacks, 2A, page 23, 6.
23, 5.
23.
23, 5, 2A.
Okay, I'm probably looking at something that's, sorry. Yep. You're, the, the latest on the table here is change 2,000 to 3,000. It should probably change four times to six times.
And then it goes on to cover the principal building landowner may waive the setback requirement. No waiver shall result in a setback of less than the height of the turbine plus 50 feet, which anybody gets it that close, I- I can't imagine.
But that's it, right? That's, that's where you're at?
3,000 feet or four, or six times?
Yeah. See, I can get behind that because that puts, that puts a lot of, you know, negotiating power and kind of, you know, power of the market back in the hands of the non-participating.
Gives the developer the power to go to residential people and see if they want to be participants.
Yeah.
Well, let's go to item B.
Oh, this is, this is your next hot topic, isn't it?
Okay, let's make sure we're all straight on item A. Have we, have we somewhat agreed on 3,000 feet and leave the, the noises as listed in here?
Well, we're getting down, he's, he's, he's going item by item now.
Well, here, okay. If you want to go to sound, let's go to sound.
We're, we're making progress. It's only three o'clock.
Where you want to go? Sound? I think Commissioner Sellers wants to go to sound.
Oh, I want to go to item 2B.
2B.
Okay, and setbacks?
Yeah.
I have a little problem with this. And one reason why is because if you go to turbine manufacturers, they won't let, the majority of them, I don't know whether there's exceptions or not, but they won't let their employees, in case of a fire, get within 500 meters or 1,642 feet.
I think, I think the, the wind industry disputes what you're saying. I think that's been, been relayed multiple times and I, I think that they, they disagree. I'd have to, I can find it here.
I don't have my computer. But here's, here's the reason why I think it should be further than that. Is because we look at ice throw and we look at disintegration of blades. There's 400, there's 475 towers in, in Iowa that are all getting re-bladed. That was out of the Des Moines newspaper. And so when we look at ice throw and that's, safety factor for those who are on the road, I think should be greater than 550 feet.
I disagree, so.
Can, can I ask what the commission reviewed on this topic? Whether they, they received or accepted evidence that it was, because the, the wind industry document I have here, there's, they're stating, G recommends 1.1 times, Vestas recommends 500 meter, let's see. Oh, this is the one that's misinterpreted. What, what did the planning commission, I guess they, they thought it was adequate, obviously?
Yeah, I believe they, they thought it was adequate. They heard a lot of testimony, both oral and written, that they were wanting a setback from the property lines and, and a road right-of-way. There was also concern about some accessory buildings that are out, you know, in the county. Some of those can be, you know, as expensive or more expensive than a house. So they wanted to provide some, some level of, of security in, in those buildings from a turbine falling. So turbine is just like, telecommunications towers aren't designed to just lay down at, at the base. They're designed to collapse. But in the event that something like that happened, they wanted to have at least height the turbine away from the property line and that would protect a non-participating property owner's right to have, not have that turbine fall on there.
But that's not, we're talking about right-of-way line now, right?
Right-of-way or property line, we're talking about letter B. All of those are lumped, lumped together. There wasn't specific discussion on a safety zone around a road right-of-way or anything. It's more concerned about moving the turbine off of the property line and a protection of, say, accessory buildings that are located out there in farm fields.
But it's already 3,000 feet away, okay. So the, the situation would occur when, maybe 3,000 feet away from a primary structure. But if there's a, a large barn, it could be 550 feet away. Where, where are you at on this?
I think that's fine as it's stated.
I, I'm concerned with the property rights of the, of the next door neighbor. And I think I got, I was thinking about this. Let's say that I own the east half of, oh, let's say, 35225. And you own the west half of that. And you use it along with your friends for recreation. And so I can put up four towers there if I look something like Pratt in that half mile. And maybe a couple over here. And every morning for two to three hours, you get shadow flicker on your property. Is that all right with you?
I thought you just said that you can take care of shadow flicker. Now you're saying that you need to worry about it.
That's what we're, but I'm just asking this if, if-
Well, 10 minutes ago, you said shadow flicker shouldn't be an issue if you set the tower right.
But that's 3,000 feet away from and on an angle, and we've only got 3,000 feet away from a principal residence. I'm talking about property that you use and your friends use for recreation. And you get shadow flicker on there for two or three hours every morning.
My rebuttal to that, Ron, is, is what is the right of the person that owns the property to use in their best interests? I, I think we got to think of their rights, too. So we're, we're changing this greatly, and I'm not even certain if a project's capable of being done at 3,000 feet. But, but I, as a landlord, that owns the property, I have some rights, too, to maximize the productivity of my farm ground. And I could go into my deal about the fact, I don't think pasture land's going to be very valuable in the future, but I won't do that this afternoon, save time, but-
Well, let's say that I own the pasture land here on this east half and, and you own some area you just use and friends use for recreation. Is that shadow flicker, two or three hours, going to make a difference to you to use it for recreation?
Wouldn't be the best case, but I, I don't, I think, and I say this respectfully, I think you're trying to put so many regulations into this that it's not a possibility of happening. And from my standpoint, I'm willing to go to that 3,000 feet, which is a big move from, from what's been suggested from the planning commission, what's been suggested by others and, and to keep putting additional regulations and make it impossible, you might as well just outlaw it in the county, and I'm not willing to do that. Now, the two of you are fine.
The reason, the reason I brought that up is because, because if I was to do that and you own this and you have an interest in this and I do that, your property, the description I put in happens to be Perry Dunes. So that would interfere with a lot of things. So you already have your property rights here that you're doing things with, correct? I'm just, I'm just trying to symbolize what could happen.
Do you think if we put accessory building in 2A, that there'd be a lot more accessory buildings built in the event that this were to happen? To game the process here?
I don't know. I was just trying to bring out the fact that it's, that-
Did you agree to 2A just, just to get to 2B?
That's, yeah. And then when we get to C, he's going to want the Federal Aviation Commission to make it 16 miles from an airport and, and you, you've got to decide whether wind energy is an appropriate thing for Reno County or if it isn't. And by going to 3,000 feet, it sounds like to me that we'll have the most restrictive ordinance other than those that have totally eliminated it. And that's why I'm not willing to change any of these other things.
Not the most restrictive, it would be among the higher restrictive in the state. I agree. But we're looking also at virtually, there's no other location that I know of in the state that's proposed or opened up an area where the household density and the growth is anywhere close to what's in the zoned area we're talking about. I think that's a special occasion.
What do you want B to say?
Whatever's on your mind.
You, you tell us what, what, what would make you happy there.
The county planner told us, one of the first meetings that I went to when Nextera made this presentation, that the growth in this area is no greater than other areas in Reno County. I keep getting that statement, but Mark, I remember you making that. And from your calculations, this is not necessarily a high-growth area. It's no greater than other areas in Reno County.
I'm not gonna, I'm not going to go against that statement, but I will say-
You just said it was a high-growth area.
Well, it, it has been among the highest growth areas. You know, it's, it's probably expanded Hutchinson, but I don't know. I don't know those facts. But I do know that if you compare it to any other county that has wind potential, that they've gone into that area where there is, is no growth, speak of.
So, Mr. Chairman, where, where would you like B to be?
Well, I think if you put it at, at, I mean, you're willing to back off of that 1,600 feet and put it at 1,250 feet with a waiver. You could, the next door neighbor could do a waiver, except for road right-of-way. Engineers have proven that, that it may not happen very often, but it just takes once. And so I think that gets us out of the majority of it, because there, most of the, most of the engineering that I have seen is like I mentioned the other day, it was 1,440 feet to over 1,900 feet, at 200 miles an hour, so.
Is that what the planning commission felt? I mean, I guess it isn't. Like, the planning commission disagrees with you.
Did they look at ice throw and disintegration?
I can't tell you if they actually individually looked at that with all the documents, they received documents, but, you know, I'll say it again, you know, their, their job was to come up with regulations that they felt provided additional regulations that we did not have in the current document, but not effectively ban the industry. It was the direction. And having these increases in setbacks, they felt would effectively ban a company from being able to come in.
I'm, I'm concerned with that, but I'm also concerned with the fact that we have some safety factors involved.
Well, I'm pretty confident they looked at all of that. Is, is it possible that if a CUP came up, that some of the conditions we could apply would, like, is, is it too complicated? Because I agree with what the chairman says. I mean, if somebody comes and says, "I got a, you know, I got my house over here and I got this pond with, with a cabin over here," you know, as an example, and they say, you know, "I, I need more buffer." Can't, can, can, would the planning commission look at that on an individual case basis?
Would that, I mean, certainly they could under the CUP. Could they? I mean, you know, these under, that's probably not. I mean, that's, that's going to be very hard to look at individual property owners and, and provide specific conditions of approval just to fit their property. They're looking at the, the project as a, as a whole here. You can pass any conditions on a, if you permit you want, and I suppose if something came up through the public hearing process, they, they could, but practically, you know, that'd be really impossible to do in a project of this enormity.
And they let you put a, a tower on a quarter section?
Well, I mean, that's the big issue I have with this whole process. This is the only zoning process I know of where you don't look at, like, typically you're looking at a single piece of property. This is the only zoning process I know of where you don't look at, like, typically, you're looking at a single piece of property, and you take, you, you take those conditions into consideration, right? And it, it seems a little unfair to not do the same thing, just because it's bigger. I know it might take longer, but.
I see your point.
But you can do that as the county commissioner with a development agreement. You can make the, you can make a stricter in particular areas.
There's certain counties, correct me if I'm wrong, I was told that a county approved a wind project, and they reserved the right to site the towers where the three commissioners decided to put them. I would think that would be an awkward deal, but they got it done.
I mean, isn't that what this says in the end?
Well, you, 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 you can't violate your own regulations. Are you saying in development agreement, you could put a tower wherever you wanted?
In there, they had, their agreement with the developer was they got to site the towers where they wanted them to.
That's in another county?
That's in another county.
We don't know what the regulation said.
I understand that.
Okay. The principle doesn't necessarily apply here, depending on that.
I, I don't want to get into citing a tower and making your social group mad.
Well, that's the problem.
It's the developer's issue to cite it, where it will work.
I, I think there is merit to developments beyond just a, a, a residence that, that should be factored into the CUP. How you apply that, I don't know. Like, the, like, why, why wouldn't we apply the same zoning standards we apply to everything else? Just because this is bigger and more complicated?
If something specific came up, they could certainly look at, look at that, but, you know. They were looking at the project as a whole, and you've got to remember, too, you know, we didn't have specific regulations. We just had something that dealt with a minimal setback, and, and we were going off of those regulations. And so, it was very hard to attach any type of condition of, of approval to this project.
So, Chairman, you're at twelve fifty?
Yeah.
What is it, two and, two and a half? Two and a quarter? Two?
Two and a quarter.
Two and a half?
Yeah.
That, uh, I'm not an expert on this, but you, you do the three thousand feet from a non-participating house, and then you do something more than this turbine plus fifty feet from a property line. There ain't any place in Reno County that you can draw a circle. The, if you increase that, you look at all the property lines on this map, you, I think you can see those. Uh, there's some of these sections that got eight different owners in them, eight different property lines in it. To me, Daniel, you're just.
No, it just, it just requires their participation.
What?
It just requires their participation. They're gonna, they're gonna veto it anyways if you don't, just like before. Let's put a placeholder at two times, thousand feet.
Two times, higher height?
Just to move, just to keep moving.
Is that from the right-of-way, too? Is that what you're saying? Right-of-way, everything under letter D?
Right-of-way doesn't bother me. I mean, that's a good point.
That's from the near right-of-way line versus the center line of the road?
Yeah, correct, the edge of the right-of-way.
Then you add another, another thirty-three to forty-five feet?
We're just putting a placeholder here to move along.
And with right to negotiate a waiver. I think that's pretty standard on everything, isn't it? Or not?
We're going to waive it against the right-of-way line.
County? I'll vote for that.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's too close, but I, I will, I, I will work towards that, two times height. Oh, your favorite coming up here, the airport, right? My concern, and I voiced it, is the fact that I don't know. You guys are pilots, two pilots here anyway, Joe's been there in a little faster plane, but, uh, with wind surge, wind wave, whatever you want to call it, going up fifteen hundred feet from a turbine, is two nautical miles enough?
I couldn't find that fifteen hundred-foot turbulence above the turbine.
Oh, it's, it's, it's been recorded nationally.
Don, just go try it out, see what happens.
I've been in turbulence before.
Yeah, it's.
Just go over plowed field in the summertime, and it'll yank your ground.
Yeah, I just, I just am curious. You know, the other option I would put in there, if, if, if you want to stick with this, is, is, uh, KU and KTRAN will do a safety study on any airport airstrip. They did it out, Stockton or Plainville, at least that I know of. And that was into information we got from, uh, one of those books.
Where do these numbers come from? Where they?
The ones in the regulations? It's a normal flight pattern. It's usually a thousand foot high, five hundred to thousand, it's normally thousand. Usually on the down leg side, you use it one-half to one mile out on the down leg, and on the base leg. On the down leg, you use it twenty-five hundred to five thousand, which is five thousand's less than a mile, or regulations, or out a mile and a half. On the base leg, we use a mile to, half mile to mile out, or two miles on the regulations. It's just a normal flight, flight pattern.
Yeah. It'd still make me real nervous. Like, but I didn't catch it. Well, I, like, what this says right, like, on a pattern altitude, it's about a thousand feet above the ground. So, if, if these are five hundred and sixty feet, that's going to look really close, if you're anywhere near a thousand feet. What, what I think you're saying, Don, is you're going to be further out, and you're going to be higher. You know, at two miles out, that's not a lot of time. I don't know where you, what altitude you'd be at two miles out. Couple thousand feet, fifteen hundred?
The tower can't be any closer, at the end, the tower can't be any closer than two miles.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
And then you're, and.
Like, you've got to get in the pattern, so you're coming in.
But aren't, aren't we talking about a crop dusting situation?
No, I, I think this, I, I know people that land at the airport we're talking about for this, for the CUP again, but, um.
And here again, if you, you know, there's a, there's concrete runway out of Sylvia, if we ever goes that far, too, so.
I, I'm okay with it, because I didn't hear, I haven't heard any complaints, um, about it.
Okay.
So, I don't know why we would change it.
Okay. Just asking.
I think, does this say something about FAA approval somewhere?
No. You feel we remove that?
FAA doesn't have any part in all setbacks.
They don't, they don't have to, but they, they approve any structures above two hundred feet, don't they?
Right.
So, they would still have that authority?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that, yeah, so, we do, we give those the cell towers.
Okay. So, we still have that coverage?
Right.
Okay.
So, that's why that was removed.
Okay.
That's why I'm asking you folks. There is one item on the next page, as far as I'm concerned, we, we delete. Item G on twenty-three six, the last sentence. KDWPT or the USA may issue a waiver of this requirement for any parcel within the three-mile requirement. I think that needs to go primarily because of what I have seen and people have seen, not just me. The amount of eagles and other migratory birds in that area. And when I talked to KWPT down at Wichita, down at Pratt, they were really wanting that three miles to stay. And I don't think that's going to hurt a thing, to go three miles without the waiver on that at all. We see eagles fly clear up to K ninety-six highway.
I just, I just saw Commissioner Sellers scratch it out.
Just putting, just keep putting more and more requirements on this, so that we might as well vote to just discontinue wind from Reno County.
No.
That's exactly what you're doing, and I, uh, uh, in this regard, I don't have any problem with your scratching that sentence out. I agree with you on.
I think the reason that the Planning Zoning Commission did that is, is if the Kansas Department of Wildlife chose, thought that that wasn't an issue to waive that, then it gave the opportunity to the landowner to have the wind cell, but, but it would take them to waive it, so.
Is that something they do?
I don't, I don't know. This was just about providing flexibility. So, if, if a landowner had an opportunity to place a turbine within three miles of, of land owned by them, and Wildlife and Parks reviewed that location, and it wasn't, say, in a migratory path, and they didn't have any concern about it, then they could waive that requirement there, and that landowner could have the potential of having a turbine within that area. Obviously, if it was within, within a flight path, let's say, migratory birds, they wouldn't waive that, I would assume. So, this is just about providing flexibility.
And my research is based, a lot of mine on, on thinking about this, is, is based upon the two thousand seven Eagle Protection Act that's been amended several times, and the last time I looked at it was amended in two thousand sixteen. And, uh, it had a lot to say in, in there. I'm not even sure there might not be enough eagles to, to have federal come in and look at it. So, that's why I thought we'd just, we need to.
I guess to me, like, nobody wants to kill an eagle, like, like, I, I don't, like, but I'm not really thinking about that. I'm, I'm, I see what we've done with, with the zoning, and we've kind of carved out the area, you know, to protect it.
Right.
And so, that makes sense, to just be consistent with, with what we've done with zoning. More than a particular, you know. I don't know what the factual basis is on how many more eagles would, would be hurt, but I, I think it's, it's easier just to say that, you know, we kind of carved that area out to protect it.
So, take that out?
I think, I think there's consensus there.
Sound level?
Sounds like there's agreement there.
With forty at night, forty-five at daytime?
Well, so, my, my concern on that one, and, and I asked staff for clarification, and, and there wasn't a lot of clarity that, that the commission spent a lot of time on the scientific, uh, discussion of decibels. And from my understanding, you know, when you go from like a forty to a fifty, it's a tenfold increase or decrease, so.
Exponentially.
Yeah, so, changing it at any level, um, can substantially increase or decrease the requirement. So, just the five decibel lowering, um, I think it's five times less, I think. I don't, um, I just know you can't, you can't change it, uh, and, and look at it and like, okay, I subtracted five from fifty, so that's ten percent. That's not what we're talking about here. So, I, I'm, I'm concerned about lowering it any, anymore without some detailed scientific discussion on it.
Would you consider, like some counties did, put at forty-five decibels at the property line? Wasn't that what one county did? I mean, at the property line, excuse me?
Sixty.
I, I think we, I think we addressed this right at the beginning with the three thousand foot.
I think the three thousand foot is going to more than cover any change that's made on this thing, because you're making it fifty percent greater. I don't see any reason to change that whatsoever. Because if it would have worked at two thousand feet, it's going to more than work at three thousand feet.
I guess I, I, I have concern with kids that are ADHD, and maybe the child that has Down Syndrome and some of those things that can, that is really affected even in school with fluorescent lights. The teachers tell me that. That's, that's, that's my main concern on this, is, is, is the fact, what happens to a parent that has a child that, that can't handle that? That's, that's what, that's what I'm concerned with, really, is, is, is the fact that we hear different than, than some that have some problems in that area. And I would certainly not want to take that. I would want a big error on the side of caution, if, if I had a child that, that succumbed to something greater, just because we can't hear it.
I think the only thing that I'm thinking about now is, since we've increased the distance that potentially could allow the, the turbine to be louder, um, you see what I'm saying? Like, it's measured from.
Hopefully, it's decreased the noise level.
Well, it's measured from the, the, the principal building. So, if it's forty-five, if the rule's forty-five, but then we stretch it another thousand feet, this, it, it could be louder.
At the site.
Yeah.
Unless at the residence, but.
I don't think, do they make loud and quiet versions? Are they all covered?
I was questioning that they use some kind of fancy blade, or?
Yeah. Low noise efficiency blades might help a lot.
Do they all have the LNT?
I don't know for a fact, I would say, not necessarily. This is probably a newer technology, so if you have turbines that are older, they probably would not have that technology unless the blades were traded out.
We've required that in this, you know, committee.
Was there any evidence presented related to noisy wind turbines in other parts of the state?
Evidence, written testimonials, or, not that I recall. Evidence, written testimonials, or not that I recall.
The only thing that we've dealt with with noise was the tolerance of, you know, people wanting it to...
Yeah, I remember a little bit of conversation at the, uh...
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of testimony or some oral testimony, and I'm sure there's, there's a lot of research done on noise, but, um... But yeah, I think the planning commission felt that the sound level was sufficient.
As I recall, that was the hum of a refrigerator, and that was at 2,000 feet. And if you heard the hum of a refrigerator increasing at 1,000 feet, you're not gonna hear anything. That's not scientific, but that's my kinda logic.
What you're gonna...
Yeah.
I, I think we've addressed a lot with the 3,000. And I mean, at some point, I agree with Commissioner Sellers that, you know, the planning commission put a lot of work into this.
Yeah.
I don't wanna dismantle the whole thing in process.
I also know that the committee came in with 30 when they presented it to the, is that right? The, the committee that was, was in charge with looking at all of this came in and presented it at 30 decibels. Is that right?
Originally.
Yeah, it would be an average though. This isn't an average.
This is a maximum, isn't it?
Yeah, that was a, yeah. This is a maximum of any one hour. The other one was a year, and it is also based off another concept where we didn't have a specific setback that we do now, so...
I would want that, we can, we can determine this in a development agreement, but I would want that to be done at night.
It says the maximum received sound level, 45 decibels. It doesn't say day or night. It just says anytime.
Anytime.
For one hour, leg, whatever LEQ means. I think that's covered, Ron. You're...
Shadow flicker? Here again, here again. Are we all, are we ready to go on?
No, no change then in the...
So I think probably some more investigation could be done in those areas that have 3,000 foot setback and 2,500, and we can determine, we can find out what people think. I kind of agree. If I was living out there and I had one, and I, and it, I had sha, shadow flicker on me, I wouldn't like it. I'm used to not having it. I do not see why, and, and, and they came, the committee came in with 20 minutes or 20 hours a year. You know, if, if, if... 30 hours makes a difference in the efficiency of the project. I'm not sure it works. Maybe they can just shut it off if a shadow flicker goes to your property.
Is, is there, is there an issue at 3,000 feet with shadow flicker?
There's quite an issue with shadow flicker in areas that have it.
At 3,000 feet?
Well, a certain portion of it's gonna be there. I've been out to Kingman and had shadow flicker in the evening that went quite a ways.
Says you wanna change something here?
I'd like to go to, that's what the committee came with, 20 minutes and 20 hours.
What committee?
I think that's a good compromise over just shutting it down. I, I, I think people deserve what they had before. I'm not sure that, that is gonna make much difference. I think that, uh, they've agreed, I think, to live with, most of the people in that area have agreed to live with 20 minutes a, a day or 20 hours.
So you wanna change 4C to 20?
Instead of 30, maximum number of shadow flicker hours per year a participating or non-participating principal building shall receive is 20, and 20 minutes per day. And I think that, hopefully, that, that 30, 3,000 foot will take care of that. I know they did a lot of work, the committee did a lot of work to come up with these numbers.
When we first came up with the draft, we had the sound and the flicker very restricted because the setbacks, and less restricted on the setbacks. But that concept wasn't bought, so then, so then when you create larger setbacks, then that's why the sound and flicker was, uh, less restricted. So there's, there's two ways of looking at it. That's why we originally had the 20 hours, because we had the setbacks much less.
I thought it was always at 2,000 feet.
No. No, we didn't have a, a specific setback. It was a lot less, and so that's why the less setback, we made the sound and the flicker more, more restricted. And like Don said, that wasn't stirred or bought, so then when we went to put the 2,000 foot in, compensate that and not, you know, have the effect of banning wind, we increased the sound and the shadow.
You always had the 2,000 feet in there, even for the get-go, didn't you?
No.
What was it?
I don't know if we had a setback. We had the, no closer than height of the turbine plus 50, but with that, you still had to use the shadow flicker and the sound. So that's why those were at 20 hours, and, I mean, and the sound was a lot less. Even though the turbine could be closer, we didn't let those two other proposed to have an effect on an opposite bank property.
Let's see, what date was this?
I think there was a setback from primary residence on 2,000 feet.
I thought, I thought it was still there.
On the roadway property lines, so hot the tar pits.
I had to go back and look specifically.
I, I think so.
I think, I think you're right, Don. I, I was pretty sure that when they came in with the 20, it was still 2,000 feet.
We thought we was really doing something. We, we actually thought that it's like really, we didn't know if it was, if it's gonna allow a wind farm to go in with those, with our draft. But it, uh, it didn't go through, and that's fine. And now we're dealing with setbacks. I had to go back and look. I didn't exactly there.
I had the one here. Is it all right to go back to 20 minutes and 20 hours?
I disagree.
I had to, let's put a placeholder in there.
Gonna put a placeholder on that?
Where, wherever headed, like, we've, we've told the public that we're gonna take comment, right?
Yes.
So we're not, we're not gonna decide this today. So, I'm, I guess I'm on the fence.
What's, what's the, what do they say there in that? We quote, we, we went to that 3,000 feet, so I was curious of what that was.
We're trying to develop something for the whole county, Commissioner Hurst, not just a group.
We don't have any say over and on, it's some hill that's zoned area. What is it?
20 per year.
If we had say over the whole county, you know, it's a whole different deal, but...
I think you can assume if you expand the zoning area, the regulations go with them.
If it happens.
Yeah. But I mean, one of the reasons that you look at is, is a broader, I mean, I think what Commissioner Sellers was saying, uh, is that you look at your regulations with a broader application than just an area, and it would also include areas to which it could be expanded. So I just would point that out.
It's a good reminder. It's just very hard to, to do that. But, but like, if we did, if we did expand it, I, I'd be in favor of less restrictions out west.
I mean, a household is a household, no matter where.
You have no ability to do anything out west where it's not, so...
I'm just saying if we, if we did apply these standards westernly, I would...
If I'm living in a house in Hutcheson, or Sylvia, or out in the country, is that any different than my living in a house in South Yoder, or North Yoder, or West Yoder, or whatever, you know? I, I guess that's what I'm saying.
That's, that's a good point.
Chairman, how much longer are we gonna go? I didn't realize this would move this fat or slow, and I have a somewhat of a commitment at 4:15. But if we're gonna go longer, I'll call and tell them I can't make it.
Well, what's the commission? Do you wanna stop and look at the rest of this another time?
What time you need to leave? Four?
4:05 or something like that.
Well, what else do we got?
What else in there, Ron, that's not acceptable to you?
Well, it's, 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 it's discussion time. It's, it's, we wanna get, you know, most of this is, is just wetlands. We're on 23, we're just about quarter, 23-13 or so anyway. The only other thing I had question on, I think I might've right one, yep, was what about, and I suppose this can be handled in, it's on 23-14, okay? And, and I suppose this can be handled within the development agreement. But one of the things that concerns me is I've seen these wind farms sell two and three times. And what happens if the original company sends it, sells it to somebody, and they sell it to somebody else, and they go insolvent?
I think that's where the surety bond would...
But if they're insolvent and haven't paid the surety bond, I'm curious how that works.
They've got to keep the surety bond active. That's one of our requirements of the project, is the surety bond's gotta be in effect continuously.
But if they don't pay the surety bond, does that mean the old bond takes care? I don't know. That's why I'm asking. I just wanna make sure that...
If you had a surety bond and it applied to an indefinite period of time, like, like you're talking about, it could be 90 years.
So that's up to the surety bond people to take care of that, right?
And the price for that would be out of sight. I don't think it exists, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
But you're right. If you're talking about insolvency and bankruptcy, and the bankruptcy court controls the assets of the bankrupt and the application of that to creditors, and then it's gonna be current debts. It's not gonna be, you know, that'd be a very tenuous situation, I would think.
I'm concerned with, with something happens that they're no longer usable, workable. But yet we, we, in our, in our development agreement, we've got, say, two years, once they're not working, to tear down?
They're in pretty good shape if the development agreement is not, I'm just gonna say 20 years. I mean, in, in the near term, you've got the surety there, and you've got, you're gonna be able to deal with that. What I'm saying is you got a real practical problem the farther out you go in terms of assigning assets and selling assets to other people and substituting sureties and affordability. I mean, I, I really do think it, I, I, I don't think the type of assurances that you may be contemplating are, are available with certainty for the length of time that you could possibly apply.
I know there's a case of this up in, in northern Colorado where four years, going on five years, that they're still standing and haven't run for four, five years.
I think, I think it's just a risk. I think it's a risk that you would have to be willing to take.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know that you can contract your way to safety.
Maybe you make it like gas stations, where the previous owner is responsible.
Yeah. You know, that, that could be, you could certainly put a condition on transfer that, uh, well, you still not, you're never gonna fix that issue.
I mean, so, so the, the original contractor, uh, license holder goes insolvent. That asset then is, uh, is to be divided up by the bankruptcy court. The trustee probably sold to another entity if it's marketable. And with whatever obligations go along, the court would decide, uh, would...
County-wise, we're in deep trouble. Who pays the taxes then on that?
What taxes would you be talking about?
The real estate taxes, whoever ends up with it. Somebody's gonna end up with an asset.
Well, real estate, real estate client, uh, or, or secured claim with the value of the land, and probably the, the, uh, the land is, the area is, is insolvent. In other words, it's a greater liability there than the, than the value of five acres, is what I'm saying. Or, or, I mean, what, the site or the lease area?
I, I, I just, I was concerned with that, see how we could handle that.
And rightly so.
Anything else?
From our previous discussion, I had a note here to, to move that transfer of ownership to under the developer's agreement, if that's the, who you wanna...
Yeah.
We'll make that change.
And that's where it should be dealt with to the extent we can.
So are we ready to have the planning department give us a draft with these two carrots in it, or lines, or whatever you're saying they are? Placemakers and go ahead and have our...
Placemakers, yeah.
Our 30 minutes pro and con to hear and, and vote on something?
I think, I'm, I think we've discussed this and been through it, that they can, the staff can prepare, uh, that, what'd you call it, red line?
Red line. So the stuff you just didn't make a decision on, we just leave it on, and then you're gonna listen publicly?
I'd, I'd mark it with you. Mark it with a question or something.
Yeah, you can put it in brackets and put the, the options. So when are we gonna...
We are adjourned now?
Are we gonna set a meeting, or?
I don't know. When, when does the commission wanna have this on the agenda?
Two weeks?
Or not? Do you want a special meeting? If you're gonna listen to two different groups.
We're gonna listen to one hour of testimony, 30 minutes pro and 30 minutes con.
So is that a special meeting, like, on a Tuesday that you don't have a commission meeting, or an actual commission meeting? And put it at the end of the commission meeting?
I'd rather just put it at the end of the commission meeting. We all accept it by going to these two meetings, but they might be somewhat longer.
How, how are we gonna decide who gets to speak?
That's, uh... My problem.
The county administrator's job. We will work together on that. How's that? Well, if you're, if you're asking. Anything else? Thank you for the time you spent on this, Don.
Mark, we're done.
We'll go from there, so meeting adjourned.